Can we go with volume on that? Should be now, test us.
Okay, uh, so again, using the new microphones and welcome to the December meeting of the Village of Boston Board of Trustees. Uh, we have a public hearing to start things here, uh, so I'm going to read the notice. And we will try to open this at around seven oh one PM. Entitled Village of Boston Spa Notice of Public Hearing to Consider Adoption of Local Law. Noticeings hereby given pursuant to section twenty of the Minnesota Home Rule Law of the State of New York. That a public hearing will be held by the Board of Trustees of the Village of Boston Spa in December eleventh, twenty twenty-three at seven oh one PM. At the Boston Spa Public Library located at twenty-one Milton Avenue of Boston Spa, New York. For the purpose of considering the adoption of local law number three of twenty twenty-three. If adopted, local law number three of twenty twenty-three would add chapter fifteen committees to the code of the Village of Boston Spa. Written comments on local law number three of twenty twenty-three can be submitted to the village clerk up and through the time of the public hearing. A copy of proposed local law number three of twenty twenty-three can be obtained at the village offices and on the village's website. Signed, Terry O'Connor, village clerk. Can I get a motion to open the public hearing officially at seven oh two PM?
I'll make that motion.
Trustee Cormos?
Second.
Trustee Raymond, discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, so we are now open on the public hearing. Again, if you have any comments, uh, this is basically a, another version of the public hearing on a new version of the committee code, uh, from two weeks ago. Uh, you may have heard some of the comments and changes we've made in real time during that meeting. And so if you have any additional comments or anything you want to say concerning that specific version, this would be the time to do so. Please raise your hand, let us come up here and speak, or anybody on Zoom, raise your hand at this point in time. Seeing nothing in the audience, going once, going twice on Zoom. Chad, Jim Carter doing that, Jimmy, so you're walking, the best option we got here. And it looks like we are going to have possibly need a motion to close the public hearing at seven oh three PM. Trustee Baskin?
Second.
Trustee Raymond, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, let's see here, if, uh, the board doesn't mind, I would like to get Paul kind of out of here, I promised him I would, uh, kind of, uh, get him out the door. Uh, this is Paul Von Schenk, who is with Amture, and he wants to discuss our village's renewal of healthcare plan. Paul, if you do, I hold the button down, you see it go red on the microphone, and you should be good to go.
Right. Thank you, Mary Rossi, thank you, both trustees for having me, and much appreciated. As Mary Rossi mentioned, my name is Paul Von Schenk, I am a senior vice president with Amture, which is the insurance division of the Adrona Cross Company. And we are the village's health insurance employee benefits insurance agent. I've been for a few years, and I continue to enjoy that partnership. So I'm here today to provide a very brief overview of the two health insurance plans that the village maintains and will recommend and continue to maintain. The first is a co-pay center plan with Empire, which is part of the Blue Cross Blue Shield National Family of Plans. And the other is a Medicare Advantage Plan, or a MAP Plan, as it's frequently referred to, with MVP Healthcare, which is a local health insurance company in Skidnahtie. And as I mentioned, both those plans are currently in force and we're recommending a renewal of those plans, both of which are effective January first. And I'll start with the Empire Plan, that is for the active eligible employees of the village. I mentioned it's a co-pay plan, meaning it's a relatively small out-of-pocket person service charge that the member pays, and then everything else is picked up by the health plan. Those co-pays are staying the same for twenty twenty-four. It's a gold level plan, so if you think about it from a gold, silver, bronze level tiering, gold is really good, so it's a benefit-rich plan. It's at the high end of that tier, tiering. And it's an EPO plan, which stands for Exclusive Provider Organization. And so what that really means in layman's terms is that it has a national network attached to it. So village employees can see care locally, as in network, all of your med, community care physicians, et cetera, as well as nationally, whether it's a specialty institute in New York City or Boston, or elsewhere. Emergency care certainly if you're on vacation, all of that's treated as in-network, as long as the provider or the hospital or the facility accepts the blue card, which is accepted pretty much everywhere. So that plan, we had recommended that the village budget low single-digit, or excuse me, low double-digit increases for that plan. It actually came in quite a bit less than projected. The final increase was just under six percent for that same enforced plan, which equates to about three thousand dollars per month in total spend for the village, and that's a gross premium. Now, not all of that is paid by the village, some of that is shared with the employees, but it's five point nine percent give or take to increase for that plan. The second plan is Medicare Advantage Plan, or the MAP Plan, which is for the village retirees that are sixty-five plus. And this has been a really great plan for the village, it's also a gold level plan. It has a national network like the EPO does, and it is actually been very stable in price. MAPs have been very competitively bid by local insurance companies, MVP is very happy with the village. The rate is going up about five dollars a month. And actually, if you look back at historical rates, we're quite a bit lower than where you were five years ago in terms of monthly premiums. So those rates have actually come down, sort of flattened out here now at the bottom. But again, recommending that for the retirees that are sixty-five plus that the village renew those, both of those plans. And happy to answer any other questions, but again, it's really the same story as twenty twenty-three in terms of no change in plans, no change in co-pays, no change in networks, consistency.
Thanks, Paul, any questions to the board?
The Empire Plan is similar to what this county and state looks like.
Yes, it is.
Paul, thank you again, uh, we have been on our agenda for later today, however, we might be sitting here in case there are any questions on discussion, do you want, uh, should I risk a public comments scenario?
Do the motion there?
Yeah, might as well do while he's here, so he can, uh, make moves if you'd like. Can I get a motion approving the renewal of the current healthcare plans the village's employees and retirees are enrolled in Anthem and MVP for coverage starting January first, twenty twenty-four, and authorizing the mayor to execute any documents related to such renewal? Trustee Fandansa? Trustee Baskin? Discussion after opportunity for ninety-second public comment only on this motion. Seeing no hands here, anybody online? Give it a second. See no hands raising online as a result, any discussion by us?
This is, this is motion C?
This is motion C, I'm sorry, yes. Well, but we haven't had a lot of any public comments yet, so you jumped it. And we're okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, Paul, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, everyone.
Don't see Joe Lanero on yet, although I don't know if it's going to be absolutely necessary, uh, for him to join us, I'll, uh, check in with him while we're doing liaison reports, if I don't see him, well, no. That's officer brain, actually. Yeah, that was, that was the plan, he was gonna try to use teams, but we can't really do both teams into the same time, it was the issue, so it's probably still. Uh, let's see, can I get a motion that the minutes of November thirteenth, twenty twenty-three's meeting be approved? Trustee Fandansa? Trustee Raymond, discussion?
Uh, yes, I have a change in, uh, in the minutes on page three, where it says that, uh, Ray Otten said that trustee Cormos has been dishonest in his catering to her side of town. And the following thing is, trustee Cormos stated she admits it. Um, I'd like to add there, uh, what I said reviewing the tape is admits it is for that side of town, that's what I was admitting to, not being dishonest. And, uh, the rest of it says, but it's for children, walkers, and bicyclists. Um, I did explain in my comments that that's, those folks were going down High Boulevard, uh, coming from the Zinsmith Trail, so I'd like those corrections made.
The discussion, uh, Matt Clark, if you want to, uh, add anything on that, because you're the one who compiled our minutes, so if you have any, if you need to say anything.
I, you know, I, trustee Cormos, you know, feels that something was inferred, I just, I typed what it said, so, you know, and as law, it's not verbatim, so, you know, but you left out the part that I was talking about, about that side of town, not about the previous comment. I felt it inferred something that didn't exist.
I agree, I think it's worth amending.
Okay, so you know what to do? Who was the original?
Us.
Uh, and so well, hold on a second, the original motion for, uh, second would have to be the two, and I was, uh, for that, and then who? Okay, so hold on for one second, man, are you going to accept that? Okay, and you do accept it, okay, just to go in the right order, start off that. Uh, so as amended, any discussion?
My client, right, this, these minutes are the most reasonable, I'm twenty-seven.
No, we're on the thirteenth, so is that, that
I think that's, yes, that is incorrect, Liz, you jumped it up, because of
the thirteenth, you're talking about the twenty-seventh.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
I'm like trying, okay, wow, yeah, so I don't accept. To be clear, I'm digging through, I'm like, I can't find it, I know it's in one of the sets, okay.
Okay, so the original thirteenth motion is as is.
As is, yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Take a motion that the minutes of the November twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three meeting with an amendment, uh, to be presented by trustee Cormos be approved. Trustee Cormos?
Second.
Trustee Raymond, discussion, go ahead again, just for the record, make sure you're in the microphone. We prop them up and everything for you.
All right. Uh, change the motion, uh, change the sentence, trustee Cormos stated she admits it, but it's for the children, walkers, and bicyclists too. Trustee Cormos stated she admits it's for that side of town, but said it's for children, walkers, and bicyclists that come down High Boulevard from the Zinsmith Trail.
Okay. So that was already technically approved by the motion itself, all in favor?
Aye, aye. There's just one other small edit on page five, it looks like the motion C, it's just a, like a typo, is repeated three or four times. So you can just delete, as long as you're amending, you can delete, uh, some of that text.
No, no, that was the process, that we, there was a whole so that was like the amendments, yeah.
Okay.
So that's accurate.
Amendment is filed, amendment is filed, it's not a repeat, what's it, okay, nevermind.
Back to the original, uh, version of this motion with that edit, that was, uh, right by Liz, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. There's announcements, uh, not too much, uh, really to announce, uh, at this point, I want to make sure that we have enough time for everybody, I have, we have some, uh, robust public comment later on, so, or at least lengthy, so do want to put the meeting along, uh, but I do know that the organizational meeting is January second, seven PM here in the library basement for swearing in, and the general organizational meeting for twenty twenty-four, there's also another meeting on January ninth, uh, which would be a normal meeting, uh, for, uh, the village or the trustees, so that's what's coming up for us. Uh, liaison reports, we'll start with Ben.
All right, I got something from Caitlin from the Park and Tree Board, she's the chair, and I'll just read to see the Park and Tree Board.
Yeah, I know it doesn't sound like it, but I'm getting reports from people listening that sound fun.
Okay, thanks.
Park and Tree Board continues to work on design plans towards Wal Park, they are currently in conversation with members of the SVP A, for the federal local business, and individual, and part of the farmers market. They'll also discuss the event sessions they receive and bring this for the studio and landscape architecture design. Their next meeting, I believe, next, uh, Tuesday in the library, I think it's in the library. Um, check the website, next week, um. And they also said that, uh, some Park and Tree Board members took some time to do street tree maintenance, some newly planted trees on Low Street. And if anyone else would like any assistance, um, with newer trees that might need some care, um, or if you're aware of any that the village has planted, um, and need, uh, maintenance to help them survive the winter, the Park and Tree Board would be happy to help, and just let them know, so this is for village trees in the, in the right place. For them, um, the Arts Committee is looking for additional members, so anyone interested in Arts Committee should fill out the online form, and, um, we welcome your application, uh, it's a great group of people. Um, and the Sounds of Wind, Sounds in Winter is having its next concert December thirtieth, three PM at the, uh, Riverside Museum, it's a classical trio, excellent. All right, that's it, for me, uh, the seniors there did vote in some new, uh, board members, uh, you can look on their website to see who, who won there, Linda Holmer is the president.
Chuck?
All right, um.
You've ran that again, Jeff, uh, second time. Sure, congratulations, Jeff.
Yeah. Hydrolyzing has been completed, and leaf pickup via vacuum has been completed. Um, brushing this debris is going to be finished up either Tuesday or Wednesday, so, um, if you haven't got it out, well, they're not coming back, so. Today, uh, Ford Street exception, prep for patch and paving. Uh, tomorrow, set paving Ford Street via rented paper. And then started commercial meter reads, uh, today. They need to get some time, uh, at some point, to make sure they have the snow equipment and plow trucks set up, uh, because it's coming. We dodged a bullet today, but, uh, and then Dublin Drive, the drainage project. Still working on it. And same with, uh, replacing structures at Science Walnut Street. And still need to work on getting the coal and those entered sign, like, at Greenfield Ave. They had a bunch of locates they had to do for gas, uh, gas needs, I guess, for a new development, in this forest park. Um, ninety-five houses. And they've got some fire hydrant repairs, uh, to do as well due to an auto accident, but that about sums it up. They're busy.
Two things, I, I should have said the eighth and the twenty-second are the other meetings in January, not the ninth, uh, that would have been a Tuesday, so eighth and twenty-second on Mondays, second is still correct for the organizational meeting. To expound on what you talked about, yeah, we got calls today from especially kind of Boston customers that were affected by what happened, uh, hydrogen got hit, it took out pressure, uh, up there, uh, pressure returned eventually, uh, and then, uh, because of what was happening in the system, it brought sediment with it, so obviously we got a lot of calls about, uh, discolored water, it was one of the situations where we had to just tell them, run it, uh, or frost it until it gets clean, uh, and, uh, it was nothing unusual, except for the fact that somebody obviously did some damage, but we have to replace, and that'll be coming up later this week most likely. Uh, let's see, you have burned that next.
Uh, just briefly, uh, the VSP A, I don't know if we got to attend the holiday parade, but they had a really successful event. Um, I thank them for, uh, including barriers for some of the busiest parts of the parade group, uh, it keeps the kids off the streets and away from trucks, so I'm very thankful for their efforts to keep everybody a little safer, um, and, uh, I don't know, it was just really busy, that's honestly, it was really, there was a lot of floats, so a lot of interest in our community, and we thank everybody that participated. Um, upcoming for them is the annual holiday mixer on, uh, December eighteenth, uh, from five, starting at five thirty, it's at the brickyard. It's a really good way for people to get connected, to see who's in the community, who our business community is, um, it's, it's actually usually a fun time, so encourage people to look at it if they want to attend, boston.org, thanks.
And Liz?
Um, the library has some very good news, they have a fifty thousand dollar pledge from the Stewart's, um, State Foundation, um, that will be, uh, given to them once the project begins. Um, they're also working on another three grants, um, so, we keep, keep going. Um, the Holocaust exhibit and talk by Ivan Vamos was very well attended, this room was absolutely packed. And, uh, you know, displays, the smaller versions of the displays are upstairs, if you didn't, uh, get a chance to read once, um, at that night. Um, the second fiber arts meetup will be December sixteenth at one PM. If you do anything with fiber knit crochet, weave, you name it, bring it along, and it's a little cozy kind of group, uh, and, uh, and we have also baits, so it's worth coming. The, uh, lib, library of board of trustees meeting is tomorrow night, and it's seven PM, and that's all I have.
Just checking to see if there are any feedback from Joe Lanero, I don't see it, and I don't see him yet, um. It will just proceed here, uh, I do have treasures before I go right here. Uh, and this is, uh, from some relevant treasures report, says meter cards were mailed out at the end of the month, they've arrived on or before December first, please make sure you fill them out and return them within thirty days, support fifty-dollar fee for not reading your meter. We are closer finishing up, uh, the, what we used to call the AUD, now the AFR for fiscal year twenty twenty-three. Fox has compiled all the necessary information needed to now enter into the, uh, NYSCOM reporting site. Uh, it has been an everyday challenge getting access to all the financial banking and miscellaneous websites, persevering on that. Uh, for the time period of April first, twenty twenty-three to September thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, Circuit County Board of Supervisors approved the total amount of four point three million dollars at the regular meeting on Tuesday, November twenty-first, twenty twenty-three. Uh, in total, this is a decrease of two point one million from the November twenty twenty-two mortgage tax distribution, uh, which totaled six point four million dollars. Uh, village received in November of twenty twenty-three mortgage tax distribution the amount of thirty-seven thousand four oh three. This is an ACH deposit for the village bank account on November twenty-second, twenty twenty-three. And bank reconciliation should be completed for the month of November by, uh, I think, uh, she was Amy for today, I'm not sure if that actually occurred, uh, but it will be this week as well. I don't see Joe Lanero, uh, in here or online, and so, uh, I do know that, uh, Liz had, uh, taken a look, uh, with some others on the Pulp Street Mill Drainage Emergency, uh, Sean, I know you were probably taking a good look at that as well, uh, some of the plans. Uh, just to explain, uh, the pricing for it is estimated at about three hundred forty thousand dollars with respect to the two drainage pipes that have basically corroded away, uh, up on Pulp Street Mill area. Uh, Ray Otten, I'm looking at you, uh, you call this out? Yeah, sure, uh, but it, uh, could take down the entire bank if it's not handled, that is why it's considered an emergency, uh, and they want to get it done. At least face one of it done immediately to stabilize and, uh, make sure that drainage is not just falling down the side of the embankment over there, uh, and then, uh, do any necessary paving or repaving and other work in the spring when blacktop plants are back open at that point in time. Uh, we are still with ARPA money, uh, we were looking at dedicated toward other things, however, we have the ability to, uh, dedicate a line share of the three forty, or whatever it comes out to be, uh, with, uh, respect to ARPA funds, and so we will look to do that. Uh, Joe, uh, was going to come on here to answer any questions, but as I said, it seems like the board has a pretty good grasp of why, uh, something needs to be done, and there is a motion later on that Carla helped, uh, to, um, put together for us, uh, with respect to that emergency, uh, situation, the motion that was needed to proceed with the work. Old Business, uh, Tap C M, Tap C M A grant application update, Liz?
Um, well, I have hoped, uh, tonight to, to bring the final amount of dollars that we're going to put on the quest and the grant, um, we have a, you know, the, the numbers from, um, the last application, and we can add a factor to that, and, and I was wondering, is it possible to do a, a resolution with a not-to-exceed number? So that we could vote on it tonight?
For what specifically are you looking to do, I, I lost where you're asking from, I'm sorry.
Um, to do, to do a resolution, normally you do a resolution that names the amount of money that you're going to be, um, borrowing, you know, uh, I know we approved it, but
Borrowing?
For the match.
No, for the match.
Okay.
Yeah, no, not borrowing, I mean, the amount that we're going to ask for, um, so
Well, we could do this on January second in the organizational meeting, technically, we needed to, because it is going to be a public, uh, meeting, uh, be a couple of meetings requirements, so we could, if you want to just get your ducks in a row with it, because I know, uh, January ninth is the deadline for Tap C Mac, right?
Right, okay, um.
That's where I'm getting January ninth from, because it's the day after the meeting, that's why I keep getting stuck on that date.
Right, um.
So technically, January eighth, we could do it on too, for that matter, if we, I went to the last minute, I know, yes. I, I know, I'm just saying, we have two options.
All those numbers have to go, you know, into spreadsheets and this'll, it's, there's about twenty different documents you have to put in these, the misgrants, so, um, yeah, I, I don't think, last time it was about one point one five, oh, sorry. Oh, about one point one five, um, you know, uh, folks that I've talked to said that the, the cost has, the costs have not changed dramatically, but, you know, we could put twenty percent on that and, and, you know, say it won't exceed that. That's another way to go, but, um, you know, the board is in favor of submitting this grant, um, you know, it's fine if that happens in January.
I think we technically have to do a full, we'll, uh, grant sign-off, uh, for me to sign it, et cetera, still, so we can do it all on January second, if that's the case.
All right, and, and we have adjusted, um, you know, the application to, uh, put in dollars for right-of-way acquisition and, um, and those, those issues, and, uh, for right-of-way from the railroad, so there's about a hundred fifty thousand dollars in the budget for that, so hopefully we don't need to spend it, but it's the same budget, and I think that's one of the things they're looking for.
Now, just to alleviate confusion, if I might, for one second, we hit this discussion, uh, two weeks ago, and, uh, there was, uh, something the county had reached out to me about Jason Tempers and planning, uh, in the county, just wanted to alleviate confusion as to what the order of events and what's going on at the Zinsmith Trail, et cetera, is. Uh, he states, as I explained, trustee Cormos, we are designing a connection up East High to the corner with the Ball Fall Fields. The plan right now, and planning in all caps, right now is to include it when we go out to bid as an alternate. If the number's coming good and we can do it, then we will build it. If not, then we will revisit it in the future when we continue to expand the trail north. The highlighted portion below is, uh, what, uh, was proposed, I might get into that, I, I'm okay with the language, but I want to make sure, uh, we're all good as for. Uh, it's basically the letter of recommendation, uh, that he was, uh, pointing to. Uh, but the, uh, point being that the county, in their attempt to extend the Zinsmith Trail, has hit budgetary, let's say, hiccups, uh, I think they've had to reroute it around a couple of different locations compared to where they want to go straight through in certain cases. And so they don't know if they'll have the money necessarily to, uh, connect where they intended to connect, which essentially means moving the sidewalk, or moving the road over and expanding the sidewalk on the north side of the, uh, street, uh, to eventually hit to High Boulevard. Uh, that would allow a better bicycle and safer pedestrian access point, uh, especially under the trestle. And that is what he's, uh, pointing to when he's talking about the plan versus what they may not be able to do if they don't have the money to do it right away. So I just wanted to alleviate the confusion, uh, that exists with respect to that. Is there a sidewalk currently, yes, is it a safe area underneath that trestle? Unfortunately, no, it's not good for bicyclists to go under there under its, uh, current condition because of its width. So it's just something to, uh, be, be aware of, uh, in the situation, go ahead.
Question, um, so you were, you were able to submit a pre, like, um, application, then they were going to give us feedback, have they been able to do that yet?
No, I haven't seen anything yet, I think the deadline for them to get back is tomorrow.
That's what I remember, yeah.
They probably have a lot of applications that they've got, and, um, we'll see if it comes tomorrow or not.
If, if people online cannot hear, please raise your hand, just because you guys are sharing a mic and you're kind of far away. I don't know if the mic's picking up, so let us know.
Meeting I picked up pretty well, but I'll try to see if I
Well, just between you and there, I don't know if it's working.
Remember, use your microphone when you want to speak, uh, but otherwise, I think, uh, that is, it would strike to that. And then we go to, uh, note of business and public comment. Seven thirty P M. Here we go, folks. Yes, Ellie, go ahead. Five minutes left for speaker, and please, uh, respectful, address the board, uh, name and address. When you start, uh, now would be the time for Zoom folks to raise your hand if you'd like to speak. Uh, nobody's up there yet, but just to remind them, this is the time to do that. Ellie, go ahead, sorry.
Okay, Ellie Dillon, one one six Malta Avenue, Boston Spa.
You don't have to be right on top of that. I don't think it's gonna pick you up pretty well.
Can you hear me now?
You can just stand up. I know you can.
This is Liz Cormos's last public village meeting as a trustee. As I reflect on these past four years and on her many accomplishments, one stands out to me as a major legacy. Liz worked tirelessly to bring diversity to village committees, bridging the gap between new and old residents, young families and retirees. This balanced representation has left a vibrant, active community of volunteers with new visions, along with tried and true ones. Liz Cormos was instrumental in moving the village from a financially struggling municipality to a financially healthy village. Funds are available to address long-term problems. Funds are available to generously restart village events post-pandemic. And volunteers are ready to assist in these successful endeavors. From her active smart growth days to her relentless pursuit of rezoning in support of a new comprehensive plan, Liz has always put the village first, preserved the village charm while continuing to develop growth that is consistent with the village character. Liz either supported village events by attending, volunteering, or as a patron. Despite a few mean-spirited residents who stopped her relentlessly, Liz remained focused on what she thought was right. Her work ethic, coupled with a diverse volunteer base, supports a variety of events and committees. It has given the village a new vitality. So we, the Milton Democratic Committee, thank her for her service, her visions and her skills. The village is now a vibrant business and residential community on sound financial footing that welcomes a diverse, talented group of volunteers and committee members that represent the whole village. Thank you, Liz.
I see you handed back. Yeah, Christine, is that you? And F Y I, maybe I should do this myself. F Y I, I've been getting a couple texts saying, uh, loud and clear back home, so everybody speaks, we're just fine, thanks.
Christine Fitzpatrick, thirty-one Chapman Street. Liz, I am not going to itemize your accomplishments. I want to talk, talk about what, to me, is most significant. I believe that your service to the village has resulted in permanent positive change. Even before two thousand and nineteen, you were a spark for permanent positive change. I know you worry about things you've accomplished being rolled back, and of course, that will happen in some instances. After all, this is life and politics. That said, never again will a budget be presented to the public by someone reading dozens of numbers off a sheet of yellow paper. Nor will we sit through meetings where a resolution is barely read before all the eyes begin with no discussion of any of it. There are just far too many people involved in village life now, far too many people who want to be involved and contribute and are keeping their collective eyes on the ball, as the saying goes. I believe that one of the biggest single accomplishments since two thousand and nineteen has been the exponential expansion of civic engagement, and that in many ways is down to you. Even if people came to meetings to criticize and yell at you for your ideas and suggestions, they came. And there was a discussion and analysis presented and issues that needed to be addressed and changed. People like you do not do well in an autocracy. If this were an autocracy, we would have found you at the bottom of a well or over the side of a bridge by twenty twenty. Fortunately, all of us, for, for all of us who live in a democracy, and in a democracy, you are essential. Every community should be lucky enough to have a person like you. You are the kind of person who looks at a problem or issue and says, huh, why does that happen? Why is it done that way? Does it need improvement? And if so, what can be done to improve it? And then you and people like you have the smarts to analyze the situation and the, and the perseverance to see change through to conclusion. Every advancement in science, medicine and the arts and business has occurred because someone like you is that spark. Someone said, huh, and asked why. Of course, these people are not universally popular. They are rarely focused, but they're rarely focused on their own popularity. You are not in all ways an easy person. We know this. You and I have had our own disagreement over policies and approach. That said, I have never doubted your desire to do the right thing by village residents and businesses. In addition, I always recall when dealing with other human beings, how my, my older sister summed up her thirty-five-plus-year career as a psychotherapist. None of us is a walking par. A word about your, your detractors. I worked for many years in all sorts of settings, and then myself was a trustee and mayor. At no point in all that time have I seen the light of the kind of vilification and vitriol you have been subjected to. The one thing I will say about your detractors is there isn't one of them who has the stamina or sheer grit that you have displayed in the face of that kind of barrage. So much for the weaker sex and older adults who should have the sense to know when their shelf life has expired. Finally, I want you to know I'm founding a T-shirt company, and you can be our model. Not to worry, the shirts will be one hundred percent cotton for sensitive skin and will come in long sleeve versions, since I know you are sensitive to the cold. Emblazoned on the front of the T-shirt will be this slogan. All attempts to marginalize me will be met with abject failure. Thank you for being such a, a productive colleague and for your service to the residents and businesses of the Village of Boston Spa.
So, uh, so I was gonna criticize for, uh, we're making the week too long, Melissa.
Okay, can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
Melissa Taylor for Creekview Court. Uh, trustee Cormos, thank you for your many contributions to the village. Uh, over the years, I've witnessed your tireless effort in the face of so many roadblocks and vilification by people whose motives I find concerning. It's clear your intention always has been to improve the community for all. Your skills and knowledge are unmatched. I commend you for your perseverance in spite of much hostility and very little credit given, despite you typically going above and beyond in all you do. You've set a great example and high standard for how to lead with integrity and heart. You're a tremendous asset to this community, and I know you will continue to help. Thank you and best wishes to you.
Thank you. Let's, uh, vice continue. Yep, go ahead.
Pete Lewis, thirty-eight East High Street. Uh, I'd like to take my time, uh, to express my heartfelt gratitude to a remarkable individual who has selflessly dedicated almost five, five years making Boston Spa a better place with a brighter future by serving on our village board. Liz Cormos, your hard work and unwavering courage, your commitment to addressing the problems that our community faced, have left an indelible mark on all of us while also creating a clear path to a successful future. One of Liz's greatest qualities is her perseverance. She never shied away from the challenges that came her way. Instead, she faced them head-on, using her numerous skills in data collection and analysis to eliminate hundreds of thousands of dollars of debt and restore our credit rating. Your Sean, Sean Raymond began asking pressing financial questions that trustee Fitzpatrick, who became Mayor Fitzpatrick, and trustee Cormos joined together to unravel four years of financial, uh, correcting years of delinquent state records. And that allowed the village to be viewed as solvent for the first time in almost half a decade. But they didn't stop there. They did an income study as well and refinanced our debt with new credit rating, which saved a great deal of money. And these steps, along with others, put the village on a solid footing. And instead of a deficit of three hundred thousand when she took off office, the village today has a healthy fund balance closer to four million. Throughout her tenure, Liz never allowed the distracting angry voices, willing to misrepresent and even outright lie to deter her from the important work that needed to be done. While others may have chosen to cater to whitewashing the truth and a bread and circus strategy, Liz, you stood squarely in it, fearlessly asking the tough questions and seeking the necessary answers. You're not your stereotypical politician, that's for sure. You never sought to politicize the issues at hand, but instead you focused on correcting them. Liz, your voice was confident and your actions were deliberate and your decisions rooted in what was best for our community. Liz's ability to see beyond the surface and delve into the heart of the matter has been instrumental in bringing about positive change. As we bid farewell, Liz, let us not forget the impact that you had, your hard work and dedication. And I know that that legacy will continue to benefit all of us for years to come. I have a personal thanks to you. You knocked on my door. You asked me to put up a sign. You took me on a ride I never, ever anticipated. Nor frankly, would I do again. What? I have loved, loved being a witness to the work that you've done. I have been humbled by your courage, and I would like to say that even Joan of Arc was burned at the stake, and it took five hundred years. But as Mayor Fitzpatrick told me, eventually she became a saint. Great luck, and I thank you.
Thank you. Um, Ron, you're listening, but I'm gonna assume it's not you. Just saying, you tell me, but, uh, I'm assuming Caitlin, vice of guy, go ahead.
Hi, can you?
Yes, we can.
All right, uh, Caitlin Parwana, eighty-six South Street. Um, and for those of you who do not know, I am on the Village of Boston Spa Park and Tree Board. And Liz has been our liaison the whole time, or one of my liaisons, the whole time we have been there. And I just wanted to say that not only has she been our liaison, but I believe without Liz, the Park and Tree Board would not exist. Our Tree City status for the past several years would not have happened, uh, nor would the grant that got us the street tree and, um, urban forestry inventory have taken place. Because Liz was instrumental in writing all of that and being inspired to make that happen. Um, she's always been super helpful to me as my liaison with advice and, you know, when I came to questions. And I am thankful for all of her involvement in creating a group devoted to urban forestry and our parks, which will benefit generations to come in the village. That's all.
Thank you. Yes, say Andy, yep.
Andy Mannion, sixty-five Chapman Street. So, um, Liz is, and for people who don't know, I serve on the, um, the library ward, and Liz is our trust, uh, we trustee liaison. And she has been instrumental in, um, helping us along with our capital campaign, helping us with, um, just the ins and outs and questions we might have about the grant process. She's just such a smart, vibrant person, and we really appreciate all of her efforts on that board. We've had to have not just regular meetings, but sometimes we've had to have other meetings that she has very willingly, um, been a part of. So I appreciate all of your efforts and, um.
Gonna miss you guys.
Yeah. Well, you're very welcome to join us, and you guys too. We could always use people. Um, you know, so thank you very, very much.
Did you have any wheels on us?
Carolyn Stevenson, forty-five West High Street. Liz, you are a daring woman. You dared to move here to build a home, plant a garden and create a life with your family. You dared to get involved with the community, joining the garden club ten years ago, volunteering at the village's public gardens, opening your own garden to the garden club, to neighbors and friends who marveled at your flowers and feed your green thumb and sought your advice for their own gardens. You dared to get involved in the community issues. You got the neighborhood involved and speaking up to one another after a pedestrian car accident happened on Malta Avenue a number of years ago. And that's where I recall meeting you. You didn't stop there. You engaged people about issues, listened to their viewpoints. You encouraged people to speak up and participate in village government. You asked questions, offered free assistance to the village, and despite being rebuffed, you dared to move forward. Most village residents would have been discouraged and stopped right there. You dared to dream and plan for improvements in our village community, infrastructure, fiscal health, and how village government could be more meaningful as an interaction with village residents. You supported local businesses and events and knew that the village had a tremendous opportunity to attract more people to our walkable, bikeable, small business community. Your contributions as a trustee have been daringly transformative. You raised issues and asked the really hard questions. You are daring and fearless. You promoted greater transparency in village government and fiscal accountability. You asked why, when, how, and then you sought out stakeholders and built partnerships to elevate those community issues. You worked on significant projects, reached out to other communities and sought opportunities for grants for the village. Along the way, you encouraged others to get involved in the village, attend meetings, speak up, ask questions and get involved by volunteering for events, organizations and committees. Thank you for the sacrifices you have made. You've moved this village forward, inspiring people to get involved and care about what happens in the village. I know it wasn't easy or pleasant, but it was worth it. Wishing you a nice vacation someplace warm, you and Sandra, I'd like to end with a prayer. May love and laughter light your days and warm your heart and hope. May good and faithful friends. Be yours wherever you may grow. May peace and plenty bless your world. With joy that long endures. May all my passing seasons bring the best to you and those. Thank you.
Gary Stevenson, forty five West High Street. I'm probably not going to add anything different or new to what's already been said, but I just wanted to give you at least what my observations were. About Liz and her four year tenure as village trustee. First and foremost, she's a tireless worker dedicated to the village's best interest. I have it on good authority that this involves late evenings and weekends. So she is definitely tireless. She has brought grants expertise, which has been a real asset to the village. This has come up many times and. Certainly has been to the advantage of the village. I also see that Liz has a logical and realistic approach in her decision making. Without ulterior motives. What you see is what you get. And I think that's refreshing in these times. During this time, I also see that Liz took the high road of independent thinking. As opposed to going with the flow. Even when it might conflict with the status quo. Not obviously. Liz is not afraid to voice her opinion or state the facts to bring positive input to discussions. That's her motive. And I especially commend her for keeping her demeanor in the face of disrespect during meetings. Thank you, Liz.
Alex Fugello, sixty high. Well, first off, I wasn't prepared to take Liz, but. On your way out, I feel like I've got to say you did a great job. But the reason why I'm up here is to talk about the Tap C Mac program that. Application that she's been working on. I know I was surprised last week or last meeting that there wasn't more unanimous support for it. The whole board has been talking for years now about sidewalks. And what the solution is going to be, and it seems like this is a piece of the solution. There's been a lot of people complaining that it only covers one area of town, it doesn't cover others, there's maybe the areas with worse sidewalks. But this program seems like a no brainer to tackle a particular part of town. The Tap C Max objectives with the connectivity and encouraging. Right from their. Their papers here. They say that they're looking to create connections between existing trails, sidewalks to transit, community centers and schools, which is. Exactly all of the things that this trail is going to connect. So because I'm interested in this, I've started a petition. I'm up to one hundred and fifty nine so far. Started last Friday, so since then, that's where I'm at. A lot of people have been so kind to write. Write some feedback and offer more personalized support and what it means to them. I know one of the requirements for the Tap C Mac grant itself is. Letters of support from the community. So all that stuff I'll put together and the petition results and everything I'll provide with that. I have been getting a lot of feedback from both people in the village who are excited by it. Business owners in the village who are excited by it. And people from outside the community that that come to Boston Spa to recreate, so. A lot of people that are cyclists that are from Saratoga are excited by the county's plans to eventually connect in. And those people will be stopping for coffee and food and stuff for lunch and stuff on their journey, so. I'm excited for that to continue and I hope that the board does everything they can to to follow through with it. Once Liz is off the board. But that's it. Thank you, everybody. Thank you. Thank you, Liz, for.
Thank you. Good evening. Liz, like many who have spoken tonight and others throughout the community, we thank you. Dedication and commitment to improving the community at large are much appreciated. I also want to quickly convey. A very nice incident I had with DPW. I want to thank Jen for taking a phone call and communicating on to the appropriate people. While waiting with some of our grandchildren at a bus school bus stop. I saw a stop sign had been knocked down and removed completely from the area where it's supposed to stand. So I called and ended up talking with Jen. Within two days, the stop sign had been replaced, so I wanted to thank DPW and Jeff in particular for making sure that. And last thing on my side, I just want to say to all of you up in front of us. Thank you for your service. Thank you for everything that happens in the community. I wish you the happiest of holidays and a great new year. Thank you.
Yeah, sixteen Littleburg Avenue. Want to thank the board for approving the project that's going to be happening down on. Hope Mill. Hope you. Hope that, yeah, what he said. Remember that. I had neighbors that stopped by and asked about that, and that's why it was brought forward and I encourage folks to. Talk to people about things that are in need of doing in this village. None of us knew about it except the people who had lived there. Without them and without a method for them to maybe get it in front of people, that wouldn't have happened and. I think you can all agree that it would have been pretty, pretty substantial problems that had not been taken care of and washed away, you know. Sean, you know better than anybody. The engineering that would have been involved if it had not been done. And what would have cost this village and possibly some people. Also wanted to report on the Breakfast with Santa that we had. Huge success, huge success. Everybody that came there was thrilled. That it was being put together. Thank you Bernadette for your voice. That girl can sing if nobody's heard her. She, Donna, I don't know what you did. But yeah, she was quite the entertainer for us and, you know, although I heard most of it from out in the hallway, it was still. Vibrant and put me in the spirit for the season. Another thing that went on in this village over the last couple of weeks is the menorah lighting. I was able to be a part of that only in that I was able to secure the menorah itself. And when guys in DPW came, they were calling me all kinds of names. With how many parts that were in having put it together and all, but it looks beautiful. If you haven't been down to see it, take a look. I saw it for the first time tonight on my way up here. It's a great thing that we're able to have a little more diverse. Representation in the village with symbols like that. And I think everybody that went was pleased with it. I didn't hear any negatives and heard a lot of positives, so again. Thank you to the DPW for putting together and making sure that it works and all that good stuff. Once the work is done in the park, I'm sure it'll become more of a permanent placement. I noticed they only put it. Partway in the ground because it probably would have been a big problem to put it all the way in. The other thing is the parade. It was a great parade and tell the business association. This is only the second year that I haven't been in it in the last thirty five or so. And it was spectacular to watch. And the truck that won deserved it. They must have had seven billion lights on that truck. And it was enjoyed by everybody. I know this, the people I was up by Union Firehouse watching it and the people up there were just thrilled with it and. Really enjoying the show, so again, it's one of those things where the villages come together on that. And it's a great place to be. You know, other places have parades too, but I think ours is special. So I just wanted to say thank you on those things.
Right, if I might, just add to thanks with respect to the Hanukkah celebration and bring pass on the word, I think. To our police department who had Chief Bush, Officer Thor, Officer Ostrander, Officer Di Martino, among others possibly there. One story is that when they turned on the menorah to test it, they realized it was actually backwards in terms of the way the lights were supposed to go on. And thanks to Scott Kearns for coming down, he was obviously off in the day at that point, and Officer Thor, whose muscle essentially helped to make sure that. The door got turned around into the right direction at the last second and. While I understand some people were a little bit concerned about the show weaponry under the circumstances was the same day that the shooting near. The temple occurred in Albany and it was utmost concern to make sure that safety. Occurred here that nobody was going to make mockery of the situation with everything that's been going on lately, so I want to thank the police department for what they did. And also DPW with a quick response on the night of the menorah lighting on December seventh, so thank you.
I actually have a brief thing that I want to say, but Charlene Dubuque couldn't be here this evening, but sent me a.
Well, you read, you can read it, it'll go into your five minutes essentially, so.
Okay, first of all, just to expand on what Ray was saying, oh Gina Marosi, eternal glory lane. Breakfast with Santa, we served approximately two hundred meals, including. What we do is a voucher system to Life Works into other. Charitable organizations in the areas to hand out to underprivileged families so that they don't have to pay for the breakfast and then we have an angel. That covers those vouchers, so we were able to turn a nice sum into the village to support other. Family events in the village. The menorah lighting. Was very well attended, it went off with a couple of hitches, we were able to get those done before the seven fifteen showtime. Again, thank you to the police, they were great. Thank you to DPW, especially Scott Kearns, because what you didn't realize is we had no power. And he came down there and managed to get us power. The rabbi and his wife and eight children. Yes, Rabbi Ruben, they were awesome and so impressed with Boston Spa, in fact, the rabbi's wife said that Boston Spa rocks. They are from Downstate originally, came flying in in their van full of. Family with a menorah on the top of it and they had music and treats and toys as did we. Hot chocolate, it was a great event and what was really touching was after the menorah lighting happened, everybody hung out still. And they talked and visited and spoke with the rabbi, it was very, very nice and it was cold, so. That was really great, so I just wanted to extend my thanks to everybody involved in that. Lastly, on behalf of the Boston eighteen truck, I'd like to thank everybody who purchased wreaths. Thanks to your efforts and your giving and your kindness. Every grave at the Solomon. National Cemetery will have a wreath this year plus, which means they carry over to next year, so you did it, thank you so much, we appreciate you.
Three minutes, just saying.
Okay, Charlene's thing isn't that long, so now I'm going to read this to Charlene Dubuque. I'm so sorry that I can't be here tonight, but on behalf of so many Jewish people here in the village and the surrounding area, thank you in big letters. For the wonderful first night of Hanukkah celebration that took place last Thursday. Our community and all of you should be proud. So many people have come to me in the past few days to voice their appreciation of our village. From the envy of our beautiful menorah, thanks Reatin. To the hard work to make this event happen. Thank you Gina, and the events task force, I didn't read that part. To the steps taken by the Boston Spa Police Force to ensure everybody's safety, to the wonderful village leadership who came and showed support. Thanks Bernadette Liz and Mayor Rossi, and finally. Welcoming and exclusive feeling that so many of us felt as we welcomed in the first night of Hanukkah together. I think the welcoming feeling felt by so many really is a reflection of who we are as a community and as a village. Whatever our day to day feelings on a topic or. Or idea, we show up and we stand up for each other when it counts. There is a deep meaning in this and its connection to Hanukkah. When our village of friends shines bright, we illuminate the communities all around us. Thanks again for creating a place I'm proud to call home. Happy holidays.
Neil with Field sixty high Boulevard, my husband made a really great statement about the petition that he has started and forgot to tell everyone where to find it, so I just want to make a plug for that. You go to change.org and search Boston Spa, it'll come up, so you can also Google it, but we don't know if it'll happen for everyone, so change.org, Boston Spa.
Thank you.
Who else in house? Anybody on Zoom? I don't see it, but we have to see them. Okay, is for this last time.
I also want to thank Liz, I repeat some of the things people have said, but I've seen her work up close and on a daily basis and been so impressed. I have been continuously amazed by Liz's work ethic, her tenacity, her intelligence and her utter dedication to this village. The time and energy she brings to the job of trustee is not easily matched. We live here, have been blessed by her hard work and many accomplishments. To highlight just a few of her accomplishments. She was a key player in the financial turnaround of this village, which is not a trivial matter. As a private citizen, she helped uncover the severe financial problems the village was facing five years ago. She was appointed to the budget committee in twenty eighteen and was elected trustee in twenty nineteen. It is no coincidence that during Liz's tenure, the village moved from a loss of about three hundred thousand dollars in twenty nineteen to a fund balance of over four million dollars today. The village can thank Liz for being a central player in that turnaround. It was Liz's idea to conduct an income survey, putting the village in the hardship category and lowering the cost of USDA loans, saving the village. Hundreds of thousands of dollars over time. And enabling us partly to afford the purchase of an entire new fleet of BPW vehicles. Liz has been a champion of government transparency and public participation. Pushing for a new comprehensive plan, increasing the number of advisory committees and through policy ensuring committee openings are publicized and open for all to apply. There are now dozens of additional community members actively participating in village government. Trustee Cormos has been a champion of pedestrian safety, writing the grants and spearheading the ADA transition plan and the pedestrian bicycle master plan. Trustee Cormos approached the CDT to install bus shelters and that's moving forward as well. Even on her way out the door, she is today writing a grant to improve sidewalk and bike connections between Zimcist Smith's Trail and the village. She just doesn't stop. In addition to pedestrian safety, Liz is a great champion of our trees and gardens. She helped found the Park and Tree Board. She completed the successful grant applications for the urban forestry plan and wrote another grant to improve our urban forest that we hope will be awarded in January. And this is only a fraction of the many positive gains for this village promoted and enabled by the trustee Cormos. We know you will stay involved because that's the kind of person you are and I look forward to continuing to work with you across the table. The village will miss you as a trustee, I will miss you as an invaluable colleague on this board. And we all owe you a great debt of gratitude for all you've done. Thank you and God bless.
Well, it's hard to top all of that, man. So I'm just going to make a few observations. I've been. Here on board for a while and even before. here on board for a while and even before, I probably know Liz for over a decade now. And she's immediately, when she moved into this community, she started working for this community. And she's been instrumental in getting grant opportunities and getting studies done so that we can get grant opportunities. I've never seen her do anything but what's in the best interest of the village and the public at large. And I haven't seen another board member who has worked harder than Liz has past or present. And we'll be blessed to have a board member that works that hard in the future. And I just want to say, Liz, thank you for your service to this community. You've been responsible for part of the changes that have happened. And why newspapers say downtown on the upswing? You know, there is, you can't deny that those things have happened because of the changes and the hard work that's been done. So thank you.
Just two things. I'm we don't often agree. No, but you know, the one thing I always did appreciate was that we could always talk about gardens. So you do have a beautiful garden. And I think people that spend time with their hands in the earth, you know, certainly do care about where they are from. We don't agree. That's okay. But I do want to wish you the best in what you do in the future and enjoy your time with your husband, you know. Hopefully you get to hang out more. Second thing I did want to talk about was Hanukkah. The Hanukkah lighting was amazing and to see more inclusivity in our community in that way especially was really meaningful. I am sure for people of Jewish descent, but even for me growing up in this community, and I know for many people that participated that aren't Jewish, it meant a lot, I think, for our village. It was a beautiful service, a beautiful lighting. But in particular, like, it's a bright menorah and it's a great symbol for our community. Just on the two lights that were lit at, you know, the night of, first night of Hanukkah, it was blindingly bright. And you know, there's going to be nine of those lights at the end of this. And I can't wait to see what kind of positive energy that continues to grow in our community. So for those that celebrate Hanukkah and Christmas and other, you know, holidays for the season, I just want to wish everyone a wonderful holiday. You too, Mike. Thank you for the well wishes on that. But so I just think this is a really great time for our community to remember that. Thank you.
And Liz, we're at a hard car for about an hour today, so keep that between us more or less, but your work and assistance as well. I know you wanted to say some things we've discussed when and how, and this was the point meeting you wanted to, so take it away.
Thank you, Mayor Rossi. First of all, I'm really moved by all these kind of words that he said tonight. First, I want to express my heartfelt thanks to the residents of the village and all those who supported me throughout my nearly five years of service. If you'd asked me a decade ago, or I'd ever run for office, I would likely said no. After all, as someone pointed out, I am not a politician. I'm not good at that. That fact remains true today, as a friend reminded me during some moments of frustration when I felt maybe that I was being misrepresented. Better at delivering substance than I am at creating image. I find fulfillment in the work itself and tackling challenges head-on. And I'm less concerned with my image than I am about getting the work done. Over five years ago, I recognized the pressing need within our village, one that had been ignored for far too long. I believe I could contribute to solving some of these issues, or at least to shedding some light on them. I never saw this position as a stepping stone, nor did I plan on serving beyond this term. I want to take a moment to personally thank Noah Shaw, Sean Raymond, Christine Fitzpatrick, and Ben Baskin for keeping me grounded throughout this journey. Their support has been invaluable. I hope that the board will continue to diligently carry out the work at hand. And I hope that each one of you, including Bernadette, Mary, who's going to be on the board, and Frank, is recognized for your service. It's often a thankless job, but that's the job. However, as I leave you all tonight, I cannot help but feel an overwhelming sense of gratitude. Thank you for allowing me to serve. It's been an honor to serve as a trustee of our village, working alongside individuals so dedicated to the betterment of this community. Thank you, and I hope everyone has a wonderful holiday.
Okay, motion time. And I will warn you that there are three additional motions afterward, at least three, maybe a fourth one. So we'll cross those, we're just going to get to it with respect to any comment for those. First, pending a motion that Justin Brown be appointed as member of Eagleman Lee Fire Company number one in Boston Spa Fire Department. Trustee Fundanza. Trustee Raymond, discussion, all in favor. Opposed? The motion carries. Your little paint there. I'm just going to take the position of task. Go ahead. Just your time.
This is my, we can do seeker, or you can talk about the law first?
Motion's related to local law number three of twenty twenty-three. I'm assuming that people want to move forward with it, and so seeker would be the correct next step at that point in time.
Yeah. As we do with all local laws, we have to conduct seeker, we being you, the board. So.
You go to beach and just go to her? Yeah.
So I provided you with the part two and part three, and we can do one of two things. We can go through questions one through eleven, and you can provide me with your idea of impact. Or I have taken the liberty of identifying that there will be no or small impact with respect to the adoption of the law. And if that is okay, we don't have to go through all of them, but I will do whatever you want.
Don't need to go through all, I don't think.
Okay, so then you'll accept that questions one through eleven on part two of the seeker are all answered no or small impact maker. Yes?
Yes.
Is it, is it this for determination with respect to part three that you've taken a hard look at all the environmental impacts and that there will not be any significant adverse environmental impacts?
Yes.
So was it then this for determination upon the resolution to issue a negative declaration in your seeker?
Yes.
The seeker is complete. Now you can discuss the language of the motion and the resolution. It's a warrant.
So you'd like to make a motion?
Well, there's a real, a motion to do what?
To approve the resolution? Is that where we're going with it?
Yeah, as long as there's no changes to the law. No one has any comments. We're all good to go. You all have the resolution to pack it?
I'll make that motion.
And the motion is to adopt the resolution?
I'll say it.
Local law three of twenty twenty-three.
Trustee Cormos with first, about the second, I'm asking, sorry. Do you have a question? If you want me to, or that's what I'm looking at you on a
I don't see any I don't see any to read it unless you all want to listen to me talk.
You're lovely, but no.
I do have a lovely
Yeah.
Why, thank you. It's not a singing voice. That's Brandon.
So a discussion on the, on the motion to pass the resolution, you said. As it's a resolution, it will require a roll call vote. Thank you. Remind now, thank you.
Trustee Baskin?
Yeah.
Trustee Raymond?
Yes.
Trustee Fundanza?
No, I appreciate though the changes that were made. I still stand that I do not think that this is key screen code, but I do appreciate bringing it closer to where I thought it made more sense for the village. So thanks.
Trustee Cormos?
Yes.
Mayor Rossi?
Abstain as there were issues related to mayoral powers. So feel comfortable voting in your direction on this. And as such, the vote count is three to two for the purpose of whether or not this is approved and as such. Getting a motion approving the renewal of the current, we did that. Getting a motion approving the small contract between Syracuse County and the village's Boston Spa Kelly Park enhancements and authorizing the mayor's execute same. Trustee Fundanza?
Second.
Trustee Raymond, discussion?
It's a contract as a donation is what it is. I mean, it's a
Well, we're not paying We're obligated to use it in the manner that was discussed in there. There's the attachment of the letter that described what the enhancements were, et cetera. So that's what the application is. I'm, that probably is going to be, yes, she had reviewed this. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, just to be specific, actually, I should have said during that for the application draft, that's for the pickleball basketball courts area. Fencing related to it specifically is going to be quite pricey and that will be worth fifteen thousand dollars, essentially what votes were over there. So again, Papa Brothers, to Evolution Paving, and to the county as well. And for our DPW that have been working very hard to get that also sorted out and try to speed bill that one way. Next up, can I, we've got a bunch of bid opening dates and bid setting going on here. This is trying to get this stuff moving here so that we can undertake it in the spring essentially. And that's, you know, getting things scheduled up on contractors' calendars is important. So bear with us here, just a little bit to read. Can I get a motion that the bid opening date for the DPW project here is set for ten AM on Wednesday, January seventeenth, twenty twenty-four, and that the clerk has directed the publicity invitation to bid? Trustee Fundanza? Trustee Cormos, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously if it's necessary for any documentation later. Can I get a motion that the bid opening date for Union Fire Station number two general construction is set for ten thirty AM on Wednesday, January seventeenth, twenty twenty-four, and the clerk's directed to publish the invitation to bid? Trustee Fundanza?
Second.
Trustee Raymond, discussion?
Let's, number two, general construction.
Number, number two, see Union Fire Station number two, general construction being the apron.
Okay.
Yep. All in favor?
With the apron and the sidewalk?
It's the apron slash sidewalk. Let's see, go, combines it one basically. Now, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously, again, for the purpose, if it's necessary. Getting a motion that the board engage William J Keller and Sons Construction Corp. to perform repairs to the pulp mill, Hope Street Mill Drainage Alcohol Repair, as described on plans entitled Pulp Mill Street Drainage Alcohol Repair, and dated December seventh, twenty twenty-three, as well as the requirements outlined in the New York State DEC Emergency Authorization, DEC ID number five dash four one four two dash zero zero one five two slash zero 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 one, dated November tenth, twenty twenty-three, on a time and material basis, had set forth in the agreement between owner and contractor for construction contract and stipulated price, and to authorize the mayor to sign the agreement. Trustee Fundanza? Trustee Cormos, discussion?
How much shopper funds do we have?
It was, last check in the city of about three hundred thousand dollars.
And the amount of this repair was like three hundred forty-six thousand change, correct?
Correct. And that probably is a max outnumber is what I've been told. So might not go that high, but obviously it was a little shock value compared to what the original assessment was. Just for, just for one thing, Joe Lanero, I did try to get on, you some trouble. I said, it looked like there was no need for him to come on. So unless that changes, let me know.
No, just, I think it'd be good practice that when we can, to put in the price amounts in these motions, like in the motion and others in the attachments. But it would be easier for people to reference than understand what's going on. So here and like the contract with the Saratoga County, other times there've been motions where you make, we make motions about money, but there's no dollar amount in the motion. So
Feel free to reply those on email too, if we ever have to change the motion for whatever reason. I make those updates still understood though. Any other discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Can I get a motion approving the minor modifications to the John Street Water Tower bid documents for purposes of changes related to requests by the village's insurance carrier in establishment of a good opening date and setting the bid opening date for same at ten AM on Monday, February fifth, twenty twenty-four, and that the clerk be direct, and that the correct, your clerk be directed to publish the invitation to bid? The approval permits minor modifications be made such as correcting the date to February fifth, twenty twenty-four, if necessary.
I'll make them.
Trustee Raymond? I'll say it. Trustee Baskin, discussion. And the only reason I included that was, you referenced February fourth as the date. That was a Sunday, as you thought I can too. So I just want to make sure that that was changed throughout and put this in as a fail safe in case it wasn't. Discussion further?
I'm just curious, is what the insurance modification?
There was a number of days issued for something that they were looking for. It was, it was minor, but it was amplified. We didn't direct back and forth on that.
I'm happy to see that this is moving forward. We've been talking about John Street Water Tower for
Well, the original assessment or study that was done by Club Harbor Associates was twenty seventeen. When they said that it probably is going to be within the next five to ten years to be replaced slash replaced.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Getting a motion to approve the attached financial, annual financial disclosure form. Trustee Baskin? Trustee Cormos, hold on one second. So I think the question was, what is the quote unquote attached one? Or one that we're going to be voting on because Carl had raised this earlier. Go ahead. I think you're going.
Yes, I'd like to make an amendment that refers to the one that you all received. But you're right, it was not attached. But basically, I'd just like to make them, the amendment motion to say, motion made by, signed by, to approve and, to approve and email the annual financial disclosure form entitled Annual Financial Disclosure Form twelve eleven twenty-three final, which I sent to all guys, by twelve fourteen twenty-three to all village officers and department heads with instructions to return form by December twenty-first, giving them a week. And the twenty-first in the law, the ethics law, says that with the enactment of the law, which is November sixth, that we all have forty-five days basically to complete the financial annual form. So this would keep us within that forty-five days. So I'd like to make that amendment to approve and email.
Carl and I had a discussion on this earlier today. We're both of the opinion from a legal perspective and from a just general executive perspective that probably should count forty-five days from the day that we actually provide a usable form at this point. Because what have they been able to do in these last thirty-plus days or whatever we're at right now? I guess it's thirty-plus, thirty-five days since the November sixth acceptance by the state. So that's on us, honestly, as a board. And so to basically go cram down a week on people to get all this information, that would be, I don't think, appropriate. The thought was either using February first or using forty-five days from today or something along those lines as while the law reads that way, we have the ability to agree here not to enforce the forty-five days strictly if need be, but to basically say, okay, here's the form, use this form and go. And the clerk would, as usual, utilize it in that way.
Well, for most people, the form is going to take like five minutes to fill out. For some people, it could take twenty minutes to fill out at most, I would guess. It's a one-page front bag. So I guess I could see extending it by a couple of weeks, but I don't know that it needs a month or two months, forty-five days. And I also do think it's important to email it out and not just have it sit on in the village hall or or on the website, but actually get it to people in people's mailboxes. But I'm fine extending instead of December twenty-first, we want it extended by two weeks. That gives us three weeks to fill out the form, which should be plenty for everybody.
Well, why don't we get it past the point where we're going to do new appointments? So everything can be done kind of in one swoop.
All right, that makes sense.
So maybe January fifteenth, just to say
That's right, January fifteenth.
Which I just want to make sure, maybe that is not going to plan Which I just want to make sure, maybe that is not going to be planned on the weekend. One sec. Now, that's a Sunday, January 16th?
Okay.
2024?
Yeah.
Okay, can you reread what your amendment is, and then we'll go to the acceptance?
And I'll email it to you. Motion made by, seconded by, to approve and email the annual financial disclosure form entitled Annual Financial Disclosure Form 12123 Final by 12:1423. Is that enough time to do that, or do you need another few days? 12:14 is Thursday? No.
Well, what were you asking?
Because it's you that want to do it? Oh, the clerk's going to do it. Oh, it's, sorry, sorry. Eric, do you think?
A few more days would be helpful.
All right, so maybe the Monday after?
Eighteenth?
Eighteenth? Okay. All right, so we're saying by 12:1823, sorry. All village officers, department heads, and instructions to return the form by January 16th. And I'll.
That was your motion?
Yeah, and I'll email it.
111624, just to make sure that was, okay. And are you accepting your own amendment?
Yes.
Liz? Accepted by the second is. Thank you.
You're the second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay, I just lost where I had it. Okay, here we go. Other business, let me go to what Carl had kind of put together for us here on this stuff. Can I get a motion to engage Fisher Associates as a consultant to assist in developing a new zoning code, zoning map subdivision code, stormwater regulations to reflect division objectives and implementation plan of villagers comprehensive land use plan?
Do you need to make the motion?
Somebody needs to make it.
I'll make.
She'll make the motion, Trusty Fandansa. You'll wait a second. And, okay, there's, and discussion. Now, with respect to discussion, we'll start with the fact that there's the opportunity for a 92nd public comment period, because this is a new motion that we're seeing. Nobody in the room? Matt Urquide is available, Chair Zach, in case we need him on Zoom, I believe. He texted me and let me know he was on here. So let's go to our discussion. If he's necessary, we can bring him in. Any discussion?
No, there were two firms and the, listen to the YouTube on that, of that meeting. I wasn't quite sure whether that meeting was an executive session, because it wasn't noticed.
I believe that it was an official meeting under their mindset. I don't know if they missed the notice on the calendar. Because it was, it wasn't, it wasn't, I was, I saw it, it existed, honestly. So I'm not sure.
I think, I think, you know, just going forward committees, or look at the committee policy where it says you've got to put a notice within 72 hours and minutes and, you know. And I think if they want, if it's appropriate, and I was, Carl, you know, if they're discussing selecting between two vendors, if that, you know, should be in sort of an executive session with a committee instead of out in the open, but this one seemed a little bit opposed. It wasn't announced, but then it was on YouTube. So, you know, it's just, it's just going forward. I hope committees, you know, look at that committee policy and follow it, because the public should be able to, you know, attend and know about committee meetings.
I think, Liz, it was on the calendar. We just didn't have the Zoom link included for that meeting.
All right, it was on?
Yes, it was.
I definitely found it somehow added from that.
Okay.
Thank you.
I just want to thank the committee for selecting a consultant. And I hope that you get the consultant involved as soon as possible, because the sooner the better. I think the reason we hired a consultant, we needed professional opinion from Sook to Nuts on our dome.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Having a motion to pay the November invoices to Bartlett, Pana, Stewart, and Rhodes. Trusty Fandansa?
I'll say it.
Trusty Baskin, as I ask if anybody wants to take advantage of a 92nd public comment period for this, I will just bring up that this would have normally been inside of our attachments. However, we got it just outside the timing for, but we also want to assist with year-end issues as a law firm to make sure that they're getting their payment before January 1st for November billing. So that's why that's here. Anybody want to provide a public comment on this? I see no hands. I see no hands on Zoom. Discussion by us. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Having a motion to continue the existing legal services agreement with Bartlett, Pana, Stewart, and Rhodes through January 2nd, 2024. Trusty Fandansa? Trusty Cormos, discussion. Again, we allow a 92nd public comment period. The intention here is to have a standstill with their current agreement and line this up with the official meeting and the official, or the organizational meeting in the official year, which now will be in January of 2024 and going forward. So it just makes sense to line up this contract with that. It had not been previously. Any public comment? None seen here. Any public comment on Zoom? None seen there. Discussion by us.
All thank you for continuing to work with us.
Until January 2nd.
Yeah.
I know, it's a long stint. No, it's.
It's three weeks.
I'm saying it.
End of day. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. That's all we have from these. Anything else?
I just, to the basket, when we were talking about the pulp mill, but do, do we have any sort of process to examine our stormwater system? Because I've got the feeling that that issue on pulp mill has probably been longstanding. And.
I know Chester Record's pretty bad, too.
Yeah, so I recommend that, you know, maybe some, I was not super busy with DPW, but they, yeah, I know. To prevent another, I mean, do we have any other outfalls that are at the top of?
No, this is, this is a pretty unique situation. We went through this with Joe in our discussion generally, because he was asking a question, I think something you had asked as well, about is there a way to redirect the, you know, stormwater coming through elsewhere? And the answer is no, because the size of this pipe is larger than anything we flow into, and that would obviously give an inversion in the system, cause problems later. So the long story short is, this is a pretty unique scenario to route the village, this, these pipes in particular, and the way that it basically goes out to the creek in this, but there's just no way to undo this. One of the features they're going to introduce here is basically concrete or cement pipes instead of the corrugated version that's currently there, because they will have a much better shelf life and not corrode in the same manner. Because my concern was, are we going to have to do this every five to 10 years and spend money, you know, with this? And the answer from them is, obviously, they can't guarantee anything in life, but they believe that this gives us the best chance to keep this from happening again, that the rest of the structure is okay with these extensions. Ever the thought you had about trying to just push the extension outward, that's what this was apparently in first place in a fail. And so the material of what was being used is what failed.
Well, my question was, are there any other locations like?
No, not that I'm aware of from what we were discussing the other day, no.
I think.
Carrying especially this much stuff.
The comprehensive plan committee brought up stormwater and given climate change and some of the events we're having, I think that should be on the board.
I should, I should actually say this. Joe, in the, in the discussion stated that he's working internally to come up with a plan for us to look at with respect to doing a full evaluation, GIS, et cetera, with respect to all infrastructure, this being part of it. So to answer your question, yes, it's on a burner somewhere right now, although they two are focusing on 92 different things. So it's going to move through the pipeline, no pun intended, you know, somewhat.
Another four or five years will have data just about everything.
Let's not go there. Anyway, anything else on other business? There is no need for executive session. So, okay, can I, can I get a motion? Make sure that the proper person makes the motion, guys. Can I get a motion that the vouchers be audited and the meeting be adjourned at 8:40 PM? Trusty Cormos? Trusty Fandansa, discussion? Thank you, Liz. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Have a happy holiday, happy new year. We'll see you in January 2nd.